I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands aloneation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public comment? Okay, please step up to the microphone, state your name, address. And direct all questions to the board, please.
Helen Knapp, 13 Spring Street, Seymour, Connecticut. I called today, talked to someone in Wetland, and they told me the meeting started at seven o'clock. And you can't even get correct information from them. I mean, I'm just very discouraged being here this evening. We come to all these meetings, so many people show up, then we get discouraged because the town isn't helping the residents. You care, I don't know what, to make more money or whatever, and I want to speak my voice. I'm very sorry that this is how I feel, but I don't feel you're working here to help the residents. That's the end.
Do you have any other public comment? Okay, item number four on the agenda, Minutes Accepting Special Meeting, December 16th, 2019. That was for our public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Any questions, concerns, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number five, Minutes Acceptance Public Hearing, Meeting, December 16th. I did that wrong. Motion?
So moved. One second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Item number six, Bladings Ridge Project, can change into a public hearing from 6:30. We close the public hearing at, from 6:30, and I feel we need to render a response to the applicant at this time. Unless you guys have any further discussion that you'd like to have amongst us?
Not really, in regards to Brian's question, I mean replies. Do we see any issues from your end in regards to any of his questionnaires or any of his comments?
We can't talk yet.
Oh, sorry.
It's only discussion between us.
Alright, is there anything that you, can we talk to you still?
You can talk to him.
Alright. Is there anything else you foresee that?
If I have anything else to say, I would-
It would've been on there. Gotcha. Okay. No, I have, I have nothing at this point. You were here to accept the application?
No, render response.
To?
To, deny?
Okay. I make a motion to approve it with stipulations from our town engineer as, as stated.
For taking, obtaining to the wetlands.
We have to go through each individual one?
Yep.
Okay.
You could read them.
Alright.
From here and then also include, you know, obviously, the balance for the work.
Alright, so we don't do the P and Z ones?
Right.
Mine never checked out?
Yeah, you got them already?
Yeah, check them.
Good. Let me see that again. Yeah, I'll take that. So I make a motion to accept.
Approve.
Approved, sorry.
Approve.
Updated on 1/23/2020, modifications to Bladings Ridge for the housing development. Number one, modify drainage design so that stormwater no longer discharges into Bladings Brook via an outfall at 17 Smith Street? No? Okay. Alright, reference one through 42. Total?
Don't forget to talk about the conditions in Brian's letter.
Well, no, again, we have all these corrections also that go into it.
Yeah, those, those are already-
Yeah, these are already stuff that's been approved and, yeah.
Any specific conditions that you are, like such as, if you want to go with the ones that are in the letter, I think you just have to miss them.
Okay.
Put them on the record. And then anything else, if you have any other conditions that you want to put down. I don't think-
I'll read off the ones I think and then you guys make comments, alright? The final plan should show a detail of the proposed ripraps well in compliance with the 2002 Connecticut guidelines for soil erosion and sediment control for permanent lined waterway. All items that are claimed to be previous papers, the section should be designed to have a minimum of eight inch depth crushed stone reservoir beneath the final treatment, and the joint sand should be a loose chip stone. There should be no stockpile material in any areas with proposed storage drains, uh, storm drain systems capable of infiltration. This is kind of both. During Phase Two, the road shall be paved for a minimum of 200 feet with the binder course prior to continuing to the next phase. Anti-tracking apron should be proposed at the end of the pavement entrance during future phases. The recent revised plan shows Phase Four and Six switched in the plan, however, the narrative was not updated to match. The storma operation and maintenance manual should be prepared for use by the long-term operation of the complex. The manual should include annual inspection reports that should be submitted to the town staff upon completion. A site monitor will be required to ensure that the soil erosion measures are maintained and adapted during construction. The site monitor should be a licensed professional engineer and other applicable certifications, such as a certified inspector of sediment and erosion control, and should provide regular reports to town staff. Added to that also, you know, again, just basic monitoring from our, our own in-house.
That, that comes on in?
Yep, just so, you know, the neighbors are happy too. A final as-built certified to both A2 and T2 accuracy standards should be submitted prior to insurance or certification of occupancy. And that's pretty much it. And then we have to set a bond also?
That be part of the motion?
Okay, we're handling bond. That's fine.
Okay. And also the final revision dated 1/13/20. Be submitted also. Anything else that we'd like to add?
I think so.
No?
I'll second the motion.
Do we have any discussion before we vote? Mike? Anything to add? Brian?
No.
Nope?
I don't think that's it.
Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Item number seven on the agenda, communications from Connecticut Deep concerning Silver Lake Dam ID 12410. In our packet of information, you guys should have received a letter from, uh, Department, from Deep, stating that there's some issues ongoing at the Silver Lake Dam. And it's just a communication for us to be aware of that there are deficiencies at that dam and that the property owner has been put on notice by Connecticut Deep to make improvements.
Where is?
Which one does it sound? Silver Lake?
Yeah.
Where's that located? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's just a basic communication keeping us in the loop of the requirements for that property. No action to be taken.
Okay.
Okay. Go ahead, you have-
So this, this letter is the, it's like, they provided a report almost five years ago.
Correct.
This is a six-year-old report.
Yeah.
Right, and it was dated 12/13/19 and updated on the back. So they reissued to tell him to start moving on to repairs, it looks like. Yeah, if you read through some of it, saying that some of it is not permit required on some of it. Cut and remove trees, maintenance level work to dams normally does not require pre-authorization from the dam safety program. It should be taken as soon as practical.
But if they have taken permission, it's up to you whether you consider that to be part of the, it might be considered a regular, um-
Is there something that you should, uh?
Well, if, if, if he decides he wants to do something, I think he should, he should talk with the Department to get the permission. Just on the same, the same program, the town has two, also, to prepare.
Correct.
So it's, it's in the, I'm just saying.
Mm-hmm.
Correct. Does DEP do the actual report on what they find?
Yeah.
So they'll go out?
They do, they, they have a report, and then they, they mandate that professionals provide some, as well, most professionals of the, of the dam that's in the town.
And it's, this one's on private property?
Yeah, I, I actually, other than this letter, I don't- This one?
Yeah.
Does the Army Corps of Engineers, something like that, involving dams? Certainly, that's why the DEP has-
What's that?
That's why the DEP has the Department, so Army Corps is involved, mostly, I think, depending on the scenario.
So pretty much it's a dam on private property that the state's going to mandate them to fix.
Yeah, it doesn't look like a lot of you would need to, need to, is it a stone dam? Or a, a small, smaller in nature, whole cut back, not protected. Now, will they in process of repairing it or not? So what is the essential issue that they're, they're going to- They're just keeping you apprised and situated.
That's it?
That's all. Alright. Okay. Uh, we have another communication, item number eight. SCC Regional Water District, 59 Rimmon Road. In your package, you have a letter to Mr. Marganski, Inland/Wetlands Enforcement Officer. Do you know where the finding is of the public hearing scheduled? Looks like they're trying to sell off that property.
I, I know a little bit of knowledge in there.
Okay.
Which is our right to, or, um, so upon occasion, they have some, like, the dam or, or, and, and water, catched, carried, and, and, uh, and large pieces of property as well. So, and I, and I think over time, they're trying to sell it off. So this is the one, after, if you want to sort of, the, the rim and roads, after you pass the dam, there is a, a, there is actually a house on the left-hand side that you want to build. There's a little parking there, you know, you can park, you know, and, and we're trying to sell it.
Discussion?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll send that over and we'll let Mike handle it from this point. Item number 1056 Canfield Road, Communication, James Brennan. So in your packet of information this week, we have a letter from James Brennan. Do you guys have time to read this?
Yep.
This document is a formal request to be placed on the agenda for your upcoming meeting. The request is made for the purpose of addressing the following inlet wetlands issues at 56 Canfield Road. Property owners of 56 Canfield failure to comply with Seymour Inlet once commissioned. September 29th, 2015, correspondence letter. And he provided some documentation for us. Mr. Brennan, last time I knew that this property, you had a dispute and it was in litigation. Hold on a second, let me take this microphone back. Is this property under any type of litigation at this point?
No.
Okay, so what seems to be the issue here?
Well, to remind those of you who are on the board, all those back all that time, anyone new, there's this letter from documents the fact that, you know, the brook is incorrectly located on that record map. I met with Mr. Marganski about this, we went through the minutes. He told me that it didn't need to be corrected on the record map because the commission at that time didn't actually vote and act on sending the letter. They decided to send the letter, but there was no formal vote. So therefore, the people didn't have to. It's, I bring it up tonight just as a concern to the board of maybe some potential liability down the road here. That property's now for sale. I knew it was for sale, but this came back up on my attention as I'm selling a piece of property in the neighborhood. Was looking on Zillow, saw a picture of my barn and hey, and they turned out a lot next to it. It's listed as that address. It also had the record map, I thought the record map was going to be corrected, you know, but then as I met with Mr. Marganski, he said because it wasn't acted on. So my concern is that we've preserved the record map here and I've got a lot that's for sale. We've got people that are going to buy property based on a record map. I would think they're looking at a record map as factual. If they're aggrieved down the road, what happens? When I was with Mr. Marganski also, he showed me a site plan. You have a site plan that shows no brook in there, no water course. There's an extensive amount of water course that runs through that property. In fact, I would say the underground detention that you put is at or near under the water course. I didn't scale that map, I didn't see it was any of my point, but it would have been a lot easier if the brook was actually in that site plan. I'm just here tonight to say, you know, I don't understand how you could just leave all that stuff erroneous. I just want to make sure, you know, I've tried to correct this thing. My name is on that record map. You know, although I had nothing to do with preparing it, I owned the property of the original subdivision. So I'm just writing you guys to know, and I'm here to get on the record and my hands are clean. Thank you.
Alrighty.
Okay.
Nothing to act on, right?
What's that?
Nothing to act on with that?
I don't, not without getting into much detail and... I have no idea unless someone could provide surveys for it.
Some time ago back at, it was a case of Mr. Brown was involved in where they utilized a stream that was, it altered its course, is that correct?
No, not after that map was made. In fact, if you go back through the minutes as Mr. Marganski and I look through, the applicant is on record and as was the engineer at that project as saying that a 95 map was incorrect. And if we look at the current record subdivision, it does not identify that the brook was located, who located it, or any soil science work.
But the brook is still there, has it altered its course in any way or shape, manner, form?
Nope, it flows out of Lot 2 through Lot 3 and down, just about under where that detention system is.
So your name is, you said your name is on the...
Yeah, because it was my property.
So wasn't that your responsibility to put the map, put it correctly?
No, Mr. Baldwin's responsibility.
Why is that if you're the seller of the property?
He approached me about buying it and that was all for him to prepare.
Okay.
And Mr. Nesteriak was the engineer.
Okay.
We'll take this under advisement right now so that we could look into this a little bit better. We'll have to look this...
So this is, the stream is not on the map, right? As I can try to configure it, this is my mind. There was nothing, the stream was not put on the map?
It is, it's on the map, it's on the wrong side, it's drawn as being on the east side of the left end. It's on the west side of the left end, went along the left end boundary there, it runs through 56th, which on the record map and on your site plan map identifies no water course in it.
Alright. Next.
Yes, I looked at those maps and I put on file a map, I had the brook located, but I couldn't get permission from the property owners to do soil science work. But I had to have it located meets and bounds by an engineer. If you look at the minutes again, the applicant is on record as saying that there's a map on file, since I filed it anyways, it does have it correctly located. Previous chairman, when I did things that I couldn't, they told me what map and everything. They said I couldn't accept it, they couldn't accept it because I didn't have soil science. Reason why I didn't have soil science, couldn't get permission from the property owners to do it with a surveyor, because surveyor can own the property by right.
So in other words, the stream is going on to the west, right?
Yeah, it runs along all that way.
But on a map, is it shown in the easterly direction?
Yeah, sure. When I saw, when I saw that they also had a map, a survey map on that Zillow thing, and I went down there to get a better look, the town first, that's a certified map.
Where was the stream?
The street, this diagram was on, was on the...
On the map of the stream, right?
Yeah.
But is that correct?
No.
So it runs over here in the stream?
Yeah.
Well, there is a defect there, I think, I don't know, but it isn't...
Alright, we need to, we need to discuss that, we need to get some more information before we can make determination here. I don't have enough information to... To sit down and review this and see what's... And then, we'll address it at the next meeting.
Should we make a motion to...
No.
No motions, we took it as...
Advisement.
Advisement right now so that we can look into this situation. Item number 11, Too High Ridge Road, Notice of Violation.
Chairman, if I may, before you, we have received a complaint in the office in regards to work being done on the parcel. This is, I believe this is Mr. Herman.
Yeah.
So anyway, upon evaluation, my evaluation, there was work done, it was installation of a Bradley that was worked with a large pond there. And then there was work done along the water course. I believe in the packet there was some photos of the work that they indicated. After review of the mapping that is done at GIS, previous years it was treated there also. I don't know exactly how much of the vegetation of the river stream was removed. You could see some rip rap that's still installed there. So, and there was, we know work with Herman, and after having done the, you know, proper survey, this is where we are at this point. I've rejected certain things from Mr. Herman. He has preferred to come to speak to you before he goes. The work is contained as far as he's concerned, but before he goes and builds out the application, details will be asked to be reviewed at this point, so...
Okay.
State your name.
Mike Herman.
This is your current address, Too High Ridge Road?
Yes.
Okay.
So I did the work, I had no idea, couldn't do what I was doing. I finished it and a few days later, Mike came and now I'm here. So, once again, I mean, I really just, I had no idea. I just graded out the side, I took down some trees that were leaning at the house. That's kind of where it's at now. Brought some pictures of the job done. I also brought, you know, just this oversight view, which is obviously old because a lot of the trees weren't even there. That I took, you know, I took down some on the side that were left to basically make the side clear. But I know it's old because there's a bunch in the front yard and side yard that weren't even there when I bought the house. I also, I was going to come in today before I did anything and ended up having a soil scientist come. And I got the report from him showing that the area I worked is not a wetland. It's like, I know I'm still in the review area, now I know. I didn't know what any of that meant up until now. But obviously with the pond and the brook being on the property line, puts me in the review area. But he tested the soils and where I worked is not any wetland. I have the documents and pictures and everything with me.
Okay. Everybody is looking at the photos here?
Yeah.
Looks like that we have a water course going into a...
That's on the side of it right there.
Side of it going into the pond with this...
Is that trap rock or that you put up against it?
It's like river rock.
Did you take anything out of the water itself, did you?
No, I actually have pictures of garbage that's still in there and I got actually a few more interesting pictures. I never walked back in the woods because it's all like brickers and stuff, but I went back there to see if I could find like marker pins or anything. And along the whole riverbank, all the way along the property towards the back, which, you know, you would assume would be like untouched wetlands. There's asphalt chunks pouring out of the bank all the way along. So I think honestly, the whole property is just a fill from the late build development, you know? I'm sure at one point, you know, the whole thing was a wetland, but, I mean, it's kind of like, just like a filled dumping site for development, in my opinion. Going by what I see and I brought the pictures to show, I was actually shocked because, you know, I knew my yard up to the tree line, you know, you could see where it slopes back down into the woods where, you know, I knew that that was filled, but I really, you know, figured the back part, it borders like the back properties, figured that was probably natural, which it's not.
Yeah.
What's the question, the question, is that your issue?
I put that along the bank, yeah, so there's no erosion, I put it good and thick. If you haven't seen better pictures, I don't know how true those are.
Any other comments?
No, it looks clean. I mean, what do you do in a situation like that? It's just...
I mean, we can ask him for an application and go through the process to get an A2 survey and everything so that... And then he can submit his soil report with the application.
Yeah.
I mean, because we only see a little bit of this, we're not...
That's right here.
We're not seeing the entire project.
Been no applications submitted at all, nothing?
No.
No, yeah, nothing.
There's the stream, it's coming out.
Right on top of the stream.
Yeah, this is what it looks like to me. I think you should go for application, let the engineers tell us. It's not our responsibility to determine this.
Mike?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
With our discharge to the north end of this property, in spite of all the work that was there, I'm not convinced that there's going to be any real significant impact to... I think there's more of a cleanup than putting install, probably than you put in.
Okay.
And the rip rap along the sides that you put in there, will actually stabilize the bank along the property there. So...
Could you step up here for a minute?
Sure.
Is that where this rip rap here is? Because it looks like it may be inside, I'm not sure if it's inlet or coming out. What's going out here?
I got your pictures.
I think part of our concern is, just, you know, obviously we're only looking at pictures. We see water here, it looks like there could be something here, whatever.
Here's the pond. Here's his house. Here's the driveway that comes in. The brook goes down along the north end of his property, right on the, will probably be right along the property line. Came in, cut in here and put the new driveway in, which is just all aggregate at this point. Alright, he reinforced the bank here, the flow goes this way to the north. So, and then you have this driveway. And there's probably at least 24 to 36 inches in height from the level of the bottom of the brook to the top of, you know, the water's been running there for a number of years. You know, the bank looks to be stable with what work that he's done.
You wanted us to have a new application and use the ICAN internally?
I think we can do that.
Okay. Mr. Herman, here's your paperwork.
You don't need a motion, we just need to ask him to...
Yeah, so what we're going to do, we're going to have you fill out an application and work with Mike on this situation. At this point, you have your soil report there, you can submit that with your application to Mike and he'll review the installation and what's going on and handle it administratively.
Okay. That's just something I do here.
Yep, you do that with me, make an appointment to meet Mike and he'll walk you through the process in order to take care of that.
Okay.
Okay?
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Take care.
Goodnight.
Item number 12, 31 Silvermine Road, Stormwater Management Application. That was also part of your packet, part of one of the last sheets.
This is, I think, the biggest packet since...
I was nervous on this one.
This is for 31 Silvermine Road.
Anyway, for the record, my name is Jesse Johnson, I'm a licensed land manager, 52 weeks recent, I'm representing the...
Thanks, sir.
36 Center Drive LLC, also known as Global Cover, 31 Silvermine Road, for Stormwater Management Application. We're just meeting tonight and I know Tom Stafford has a very long to do this. If you guys would like over to a freehold view of the project?
Certainly.
Alright, so with a departmental 5.1 acre piece of land located in the PI2 industrial zone, front of Silvermine Road and Cogville Lane, Route 67 is right here. There's a 5,000 square foot industrial building on the site with driveway access off of Silvermine Road. Global Cover primarily uses the building for warehousing. Global Cover is the main manufacturer of retractable fixed enclosures for restaurants, hotels, and pools. Uplifting glass enclosures that are older pools. Most of the fabrication of these facilities, they place at their Bethany facility, their main facilities in Bethany. This building uses the warehousing, they have like pieces of plexiglass and stuff in the building. Saw them come over with their trucks and grab a piece of material and cut it, it goes back to Bethany Fabricate. Presently access in and out of the site is difficult for several reasons. Existing driveway to the site, it's only 20 feet wide. And it's not configured well, the turning radius coming into it's not configured well for vehicles approaching from the south, which is primarily where all the oil comes and deals with approach from. The intersection with Silvermine 67 is pretty dangerous and it's also pretty steep. So they access the Cogville of progress and how Silvermine accesses the site and they have to have the whole time getting it out of here. Also, once they're on the site, this driveway area is only about 40 feet wide. So by the time you park some cars, there's very little maneuver vehicles on the site. Presently, stormwater on the site, first driveways, but the two catch basins can obfuscate the retention area on the north side of the building. Global Cover proposing 4,700 square foot building addition. Building additions will go to the rear building. Along with that, we're expanding the driveway parking area. The entrance is going to be expanded, parking area for here. In order to do that, we are installing a retaining wall along the southern limits of that construction. And like I said, we're also expanding driveway in this area and along with that, we're closing both the Millings driveway that's going to circle around to the rear building for access to the rear. So as far as proposed stormwater, these two catch basins are still at the low point of collecting most of the water from the driveway. We are proposing a new catch basin top at the low point of driveway in this area. That catch basin top is going to be on top of a hydrobrayon separator that will collect most of the water from the development area here. And from there, that water will pipe down and will outlet into our stormwater management area. The stormwater management area is a banquet style, open pension basin that will provide water quality as well as through future, the post development, keep going operating. Leaders from the post building and the construction building will also be connected to the next stormwater management area. The detention pond, that's obviously sized for adequate storage. And also, the lowest output of the pond is about a foot above the bottom of the basin. So the bottom of the basin will store and treat the first one as rainfall. And that will be infiltrating around the bottom of the basin. Basin will discharge through a series of outlet structures. Conventionally, more than we would conventionally propose, but we have multiple outlet structures that will come down and the water will outlet into your breast flat pass. Third, steep slope here, we're trying to disperse...
Those pipes that will be coming from the detention pond?
Yes, there's a small outlet structures in the pond and there's six inches of the outlets, that's about, and the water will come out through the non-woven breast flat.
Is this recessed?
Yeah.
That is from the surface?
The pond?
The retention pond.
Yeah, so we have a cross section of the pond. This green line that you see here is the existing green. The green is the existing ground, the slope of the ground coming down and the pink is where we're digging in. This is the bottom of the detention pond. So we're digging in the high side and we're just flopping that to the works up and making the basin there. The outlet structure, it will outlet to the... We've done this in multiple locations, we're trying to disperse the outlet across the hill instead of just having discharge in one spot. Proposed standard growth control measures still tense along with diversion terms. This detention basin has been, once the trees are cleared, this will be one of the first things constructed on the site and not just temporary assembly construction. Water will be directed to it by a couple of diversion firms. And the outlets, inlets on the outlet structures will be covered with non-woven filter fabric. So act as a filtered contracting assembly system.
You say non-woven filter fabric, what does that answer to?
It's a, non-woven filter fabric is a little more permeable than a woven filter fabric. Woven filter fabric is tighter weave and water is easier to squeeze in. The non-woven filter fabric allows water to flow through, but will filter out and make that... Proposed activities are not within a regulated area. The only parent wells on it near the parcel are located over here in the northeast corner. It's across 280 feet from our nearest disturbance. You know, as part of it, we are doing considerable regrading on the site. We have a pretty good cut in the front of this parcel, beginning this driveway area. That material's not going to leave the site, it's going to be filling in the rear building, the previous driveway. So we're sticking to the front.
Any questions? Okay. Do you want to need a motion?
Or just to accept the obligation?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to accept the obligation.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Enforcement officer's report?
Before you add the follow-up on I2 High Ridge Road, I mean you have guy...
Any questions for Mike? No questions? Okay. Item number 14 on the agenda, public comment. Any public comment? No public comment at this time. Commissioner's public comment? Anybody have any comment? No? No Commissioner's public comment? Item number 16, any correspondence for the board? Okay.
Too late.
I'm honored to help you commissioners on all of our boards in town. On March 26th, which is a Thursday evening, register, well, starting at 5:30 registration, presentation by Bruce Hyde from 6:30 to 8:00 on the guide for making local land use decisions in the state of Connecticut. Mr. Hyde has done extensive work for Clear from Yukon, has done presentations, and we felt it was a good idea to bring him in to discuss all of what your responsibilities are, what our responsibilities are as officers, staff in the town and the decisions that we should be, should or should not be making, timeframes, etc. So that presentation will be here in the Norman Drummond Room from those hours and we'll be also hosting it with the Norgutuck Valley COGS, so we're hoping to have an attendance of 100.
What date is this?
It's a Thursday night, March 26th. You will get formal notice from my... You will get formal notice from my office in regards to, just as a reminder, I'll remind you again in March. Um, so we're looking, um, to have you included in this, and, you know, by all means, please come out and, uh, maybe hopefully we all learn something together.
Thanks.
Okay?
Thank you.
Good work for me. Could be good by that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
One, one other item for your consideration. Um, as you know, the land use department consists of myself, the director, and Mike, uh, and Son, and Thor, and I, so, and, uh, the boy officer, and, uh, the director, the same, you know, I have the designation, uh, community. I also hold it, hold a, uh, designation as assistant CEO, um, to help in the office with paperwork, although I don't see field work, anything like that. That's a word to consider also. Deploying me as a designation of a junior land use officer, and on Monday from Mike's spot here, if there's cases of, um, of, uh, administration, um, certain, uh, like, uh, if you, if you consider that, you know, if there's an erosion, uh, that may be something that might be good.
Do we need to make that, uh, item on the next, uh, agenda?
Yeah, if you wanted to stop it, you could put it out of the agenda, um...
Mike, if you can make that a note for next meeting to add that to the agenda, please, for us, so we could have a discussion about it. Anything else, guy? Okay, item number seventeen, motion two.
I make a motion, Jerry.
Any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The Thirty-One Silver Mine, is that, um, that Caspary was?
No, that's the total opposite of that, going down this way.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, that's...